Okay, we're gonna open the meeting. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Town of East Bridgewater Planning Board. It's Monday evening, March 15th, 2021. We'll call it, uh, we'll call it 7:00 PM. Currently present for the board, Dorothy Simpson, Administrative Assistant, Kevin Riley, Associate Member, Sheila Savoy-Glynn, an Associate Member who's with us remotely, John Lawler, Lindy Snow, regular member who's with us remotely, and myself, Roy Gardner.
Excuse me, why? Yes, sir.
Skip right over you when I get you checked off. Edward O'Leary, regular member, is also present. Okay. Uh, we've got minutes from March 1st.
We'll accept the minutes of March 1st, 2021, as printed.
So that's a... That's a motion, Riley. Do we have a second to that motion? That's a motion, Riley, uh, 2nd O'Leary, to approve the minutes of, uh, March 1st, 2021. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll call that as a unanimous vote of all members present and voting. That's seven in favor, none opposed. So next item for discussion would be, uh, Graham on Oak Street. My understanding is we have a letter in our file asking us to further extend the time period for action on the AD Oak Street proposal. So we should put in the record a, a motion to accept that request for extension pending a final decision by the applicant of what he wants to do for an alternate layout of his subdivision. So could we have a motion to that effect? So move. So that's a motion, O'Leary, 2nd?
2nd.
Okay, 2nd. Snow, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as seven in favor, none opposed.
Not voting.
Okay, uh, Associate Member, uh...
Just for the consistency.
Kevin Riley is gonna abstain, so we'll call it six in favor, none opposed. Okay, just a quick update on, on, uh, Celberti Realty, uh, special permit applications. We have actually sent them the letter asking them to formally withdraw their request at this time. Uh, it is technically the second letter we've sent them, uh, and that was sent on March 10th. So we'll give them until our next meeting, uh, to see what we hear back from them, and then we'll decide where we go from there at the next meeting. Next item on the agenda is the preliminary subdivision we're still looking at for, uh, for Knight's Way. Okay, so just a couple of quick points here on, on Knight's Way. There's at least one condition in the City of Brockton's approval is not acceptable. Not acceptable to the Town of East Bridgewater, not accepted, not acceptable legally under subdivision control. That's, uh, condition number 12. Condition number 12 in the Brockton letter requires that the homeowners association are required to repair and maintain the roadway in common areas until such time as accepted by the town. Uh, that's in direct contravention of state law, which says that the applicant who owns the subdivision at the time it was approved is responsible for that, and that's covered under the bond under subdivision control. Until such time as that is accepted, it's up to the applicant to maintain plow and do any other necessary work on the roadway. That's the only incentive under state law that the applicant has to, let's say, exploit getting the roadway accepted. Otherwise, he can walk away and the residents own it and have to maintain it. As of right now, I think that's the, the only specific condition that, that's not acceptable to us. The other thing we need to know and, and we need to make clear is that, uh, upon us opening the, the public hearing, we'll, we'll state for the record that until such time as we have a signed intermunicipal agreement with the City of Brockton for both water and sewer, that the final approval that I assume at some point we are going to give doesn't take effect for the purposes of endorsing the plan and having it recorded at the registry until such time as those documents are available.
So would that mean that East Bridgewater would not entertain a site-specific intermunicipal water agreement?
I would say that's possible, but Brockton has indicated they would decline to do that since they're already negotiating with this, with East Bridgewater for a, for a townwide intermunicipal agreement. Uh, part of the backstory there is that the, the City of East Bridgewater has had interconnections to the City of Brockton's water supply for what I would call, right now, for emergency use. I gotta interrupt for one minute here. Member Rob Lyons is currently now present in the room. All right, back to where I was. The, the City of Brockton is currently negotiating with the Town of East Bridgewater for a townwide intermunicipal agreement to cover the emergency connections that we already have in place. We have several emergency connections in several different locations in town to cover the fact that, uh, I don't wanna say Brockton has an infinite water source, but they, for all purposes, right now, they do. They have almost enough for the entire City of Brockton, just coming from the, the desalinization, desalinization plant which they currently own. The state, as I understand it, has mandated to Brockton that they sign an intermunicipal agreement to cover those interconnections which we already have. We're looking at several other locations, at least one other location in town to use the City of Brockton water. So I would expect that the city is not gonna wanna have a, a individual site agreement. They're gonna have one that, that covers the whole town, so...
I think we would certainly prefer to be, you know, to be taking water pursuant to a intermunicipal agreement that affects more than just our subdivision. You know, my, my concern is just in the event that, that, you know, is, is years away, if, if it would be appropriate for us to, or if it wouldn't be against the wishes of the board for us to have a clause where we could seek a site-specific intermunicipal water agreement, if it so becomes necessary.
Certainly, you're, you're more than welcome to do that. Given the other thing we're working on, it's, it's a lot closer to five or six months away than, than years away, so...
Very good, that is the time.
Hopefully. All right, and I'm sorry, but for the record, can you, can you both state your name, just for the record, if you would, please?
Absolutely. Ben Carroll.
Scott Floyd, the attorney for the applicant.
So the other thing that we discussed a little bit and we're still working on, but, uh, it's clear to us that we don't have what we term the final ASBIL for Victory Lane. According to our records, a Mylar was brought to us, which was incomplete, and it was turned back to the, to the applicant at the time. We kept a print of that Mylar. Also, at that point in time, it was noted that the, uh, light poles aren't physically in place in the, in the subdivision. Again, for the record, those light poles are the sole responsibility applicant, and they are to be paid for by the applicant. The capital cost belongs to the applicant for those. The Town of East Bridgewater does not, never has leased poles from National Grid. We do pay for the light fee after such time as the roadway is accepted. The cost of electricity for the lights is, is either paid for by the applicant or deducted from the bond amount until such time as the roadway is accepted. Again, based on our read of case law and, and state law and our advice from Town Council, all of the expenses related to the subdivision component of the development belong to the developer until such time as we accept the roadway.
So, for, just for the purposes of the clarity of the record, are there any additional comments, before we take the Victory Lane kind of the separate collateral issue, are there any additional comments on the preliminary subdivision for Knight's Way?
As of right now, I don't believe so. We did get a letter from the fire department...
We saw that, yeah.
...indicating that, that they're okay with it.
So is, is the board still waiting for comments from other departments, or are the two comments that the chair has mentioned, namely, the, the homeowners association being responsible for the pair of the road and that being on the owner, developer, and the intermunicipal agreement, are there any other comments?
We've had extensive discussions with the DPW, but those are kind of reflected in the intermunicipal agreements.
Got it.
Okay, all right. The roadway within East Bridgewater looks to be, as best as we can tell, pretty much designed and constructed per our standards.
Excellent.
We typically don't comment on the, uh, conservation-related issues and, and the stormwater management issues that, that, that basically are owned by conservation since it's a, what we refer to as a dual-application site, as most sites are in East Bridgewater. There's very few sites where you don't have to go to conservation as well as to the planning board. The conservation, uh, the planning board will effectively defer to conservation for all of the stormwater management issues, unless we have a major conflict in, in design concepts, which I don't expect we have, we don't have, haven't had those in the past. I don't expect we'll have them in the future. Okay. So I believe at this point, uh, independent of the, the discussions we've had relative to physical location and access and some of those other things, we, we really can't do anything about the geography. The geography is what it is. So that being said, I, I think at this point, uh, we're not happy that, that Brockton wants to insist on a City of Brockton layout of the roadway despite the fact that the roadway services all East Bridgewater homes, with maybe one exception. Legally, we've been given preliminary information. We should probably leave that alone, even though it looks awful. Having a thirty-some-odd-foot-wide road with a giant cul-de-sac at the end of it that's in the middle of a roadway that continues on into a residential subdivision doesn't, doesn't fit any, anybody's highway standards, but apparently that's what Brockton's gonna insist on, so apparently we'll have to live with that.
So as I understand, we have, uh, some test pits being dug and witnessed for the stormwater management system this Friday, so I think that would put us on track to be submitting a definitive subdivision plan, hopefully at the next meeting, if practicable. I think there's some application requirements we have to comply with. But, so, I guess as, as we sit here, of course, things can change between now and then, but are there any other, aside from taking care of this judgment of remand issue, you know, do, does, does this board see anything else that is a material problem or, or something that they would like further comment or explanation on?
Uh, I don't think right now, other than those issues, uh...
Okay.
I, I think we're pretty much okay.
Okay. We'll address those issues.
And I will pass on information I have, which can be further discussed in the room down the other end of the hall, but conservation has indicated they still don't have an ASBIL for the final drainage system. So I think they're in the same position as us. My understanding from what I was told verbally is that, at the time that plan went in, it was sent back saying it's not complete to the standards they need to be able to issue their order of conditions on the drainage system. Which is in part what was hanging us up, 'cause until that's done, that drainage system is also on our plan, so that, that makes it...
Could change depending, yes, understood.
And again, typically, we just accept what they say, and, and we did on the original approval for that, and I'm sure we will. If they approve the ASBIL for the drainage system, then we're not gonna have anything to say about that, but it does need to be approved before it comes back to us, 'cause we don't wanna have an ASBIL turned over to Town Council to start up on the roadway acceptance documentation and paperwork if conservation is in the process of changing it.
Yeah, understood, understood. Yep, absolutely.
Any questions you guys have for us?
Not at this time, but I'm sure we will. Now, I, I can address, I can address the Victory Lane issue to the best of my abilities tonight. I've dug through, probably about five years of correspondence relative to this, uh, so it, it seems to me that, one thing that I have is a, uh, letter from John Delano, who I believe was a civil engineer, recognizing that a Mylar was received by the town, whether or not that became the final Mylar. I think, I think the overarching issue had to do with roadway lights, which are still not up on, on Victory Lane. And when the subdivision was approved, it was approved with specific roadway lights to be purchased and secured through National Grid. And then when the applicant went to actually get the, the lights from National Grid, National Grid said, "We no longer sell lights. We only sell, we only rent or lease lights to towns to be purchased." And so we came back to, to East Bridgewater, attempting to, to see, uh, how we could go about purchasing and/or renting and/or creating an agreement with National Grid to have these lights in the subdivision. And from what I can tell, it, it just was never resolved between, um, the developer at the time and the town as to what an appropriate plan was. And I think it was actually brought before this board in 2017 to, to come up with a solution for that. Um, and as far as I can tell, I, I, the applicant still could not go to National Grid and purchase lights for the subdivision. Uh, we're more, more than happy to purchase lights, it just, it seems that, it's, well, I don't know if it has to be the town, but it has to be, you, I, you can't just go to an electrical supply place, put up lights, and interconnect it to National Grid, for sure.
Oh, so, so agreed. So what we originally agreed to, at least I thought we'd agreed to, is National Grid had given us three types of lights that they will supply, and they will install at a one-time cost or as an option on a lease fee. And there were three different styles, and we had the, the, the two or three pages of each type of light showing different profiles along with a page on how they're wired. So I'm not, I'm not totally sure where the disconnect is here, because National Grid clearly has done that in the past. We have multiple subdivisions where we've done that.
It's, uh, so I think that was where we were as well. We, we approached National Grid more than one time to purchase these lights, and we're told we do not sell lights anymore. There is no, there is no possible way to just purchase a light. You have to, you have to lease a light, and I think it had to do with changes in their policies for maintenance of lights.
So it's, it's possible those other developers bought the same light from the supplier that National Grid gets them from. I don't honestly know that, but I'll, I'll have our office check into that.
Quite frankly, if someone could direct me towards the person to purchase and ask to install a light pole, we'd, we'd be more than happy to do that.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll take care of that. We'll also talk to DPW. We talked to John Haynes about that, to sort out why there's a disconnect there, 'cause John Haynes was the one, I think, who provided us with the three sets of lights of the, the lights available from National Grid that would be potentially acceptable.
Is there an individual that the board would recommend acting as kind of the main point of contact to move the Victory Lane issues forward? And as we, so we're not just reaching out to random town departments without some sort of context?
Well, so... Yeah, but the only person that can be right now is me, and, and I apologize for that, but we don't have a, we don't have a full-time engineer on board at this point in time. We're in the process of, of doing engineering reviews and actually have all the proposals at hand. We're reviewing them right now. We also don't have a town planner, which we're gonna hire, I think, shortly. Interviews at, at Wednesday. We don't have him on board right now either, so...
So without an engineer, without a planner, this is kind of a...
Uh, it falls on the next, the next person down the, down the, down the line.
And then the, the issue with the Mylar, I'm not, to be honest, I'm not exactly sure, you know, I think you said that there was something about sizing being off. Um, I, I have spoken with Bruce Pelling, who's the engineer of record for that project, since the last meeting, and he, he has various copies of things, and I'm sure that that's something that can very easily be stressed out.
And as I said, it, it needs to reconcile correctly with the, with the final Mylar that ConCom approves to issue their, their order, their final, uh, order of compliance for the drainage system. My understanding from the information I got in the last week or so is they were tracking down that, they've issued, uh, compliance certificates for most of the individual lots, if not all of the individual lots, but the, the primary drainage system for the entire subdivision, including its, its outfalls, it was still, had outstanding issues, and I think some of those issues were dimensionally issues, based on what's physically built and, and what was on the original plan. Typically, that comes to us shortly after ConCom okay's it.
So do you expect that we'll get a report of some kind from ConCom?
Uh, the next step, it goes to Town Council, and at that point, Town Council will, will either go back to you and request the information he needs to be able to draft the language for, for the taking. Part of that is gonna be, be dictated by how, how the roadway was held when the lots were transferred, whether the roadway ownership was maintained by the developer or whether the roadway ownership was, was effectively conveyed as part of the deeds. I mean, that's the typical, the two typical ways that it's done. The lot is either conveyed with its 50% of the roadway to the center line, and its front to individual landowners, and then the taking has to basically take a bunch of individual pieces of land, or the developer keeps the roadway, which sometimes they do for insurance purposes, because they have to maintain it. If they don't own it, there's issues there that we've been told in the past can get complicated.
I, I actually think this may have been done, and I'm possibly wrong on this, in December of 2015 by Power Counsel Michael O'Shaughnessy, 'cause I have a deed to East Bridgewater in my records.
Okay, our Town Council, who we've had since that time, doesn't have anything on it from what they've told us, so...
So Victory Lane's got the three issues, the, the light poles, the Mylar, and then deeding the roads, getting title of the roads to, to East Bridgewater.
Well, we need, we need the language of, of the deeds so that when the Town Council writes the takings, they're correct. He, he could theoretically sit down and try and track every individual home through the registered deeds, but that's not normally the way we do it. Normally, the way we do it is you'll tell us how, how the roadway was either conveyed or not conveyed. If it's still owned by you, then we would need a, a deed to convey the road to the town that Town Council could then look at and make sure it's got the correct wording under Massachusetts general laws to do a, do a taking of the roadway.
We'll reach out to conservation about the, the drainage system. Are there any other issues with Victory Lane that you'd like us to address?
Not that I'm aware of. Is any, anyone else here at, on the, at the table or in the room, has, have anything they need to add about Victory Lane? I, I think that pretty much covers it.
And just to, if we could, can we put the Victory Lane as like a separate, um, agenda item on the...
Okay, and the only reason we're not doing that, at least so far, is that technically the way the documents have been filed with this, it's, it's the same owner.
But two separate projects.
I don't disagree with that.
Okay. Understood.
The overlap in Mass general laws as to how those are supposed to be handled gets murky when they're both the same owner. So we'll try not to overlap those too much, but... Okay?
Thank you. When's the next meeting? When's the...
Confession.
Yeah, when is the next meeting?
April 5th.
April 5th, I think, is it?
Yeah, that's, that's the very busy night.
Yeah.
The very busy night.
Very.
We're probably gonna be meeting in the High School Auditorium that night, 'cause we're gonna have multiple zoning articles that we have to have hearings on prior to our annual town meeting, but...
Got it.
Okay. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, the next thing I come down to on the, the agenda item is update on 60 Franklin Street. So who's supposed to be giving an update on 60 Franklin Street?
Uh, I think we were gonna speak with the building commissioner on some of the, um, issues on the, on the plan. But since our last meeting, the Honeydew has opened on the inside, but the drive-through window's not open yet. I understand, I think the DJ Electric, like, somebody had told me they moved out. The other ones that were right, right beyond the drive-up window.
I think that's possible, 'cause when I went by there, two days ago, the office there looked empty. It looked like everything was gone.
So I don't, I don't think we spoke with the building commissioner.
Well, I haven't heard anything back from him yet as to whether or not what they're doing is in compliance with the plan, but... Okay.
Okay.
So do we know yet if, is, is the ASBIL plan for Elmwood Court been turned over to the Town Council yet?
No, we have the ASBIL plan, but that's all we have. We don't have any documentation, we don't have any, um, you know, deed for the roadway. They were trying to put all that paperwork together, but the only thing we have is the ASBIL plan, that's it.
So they're still working on the rest of the page. Do they have a copy of the, the roadway acceptance document we have?
Yes, they do.
All right, so they, they know that information needs to be in a package together to go to Town Council for review before...
Yes, they do.
Before they okay it?
Yeah, I discussed that with them.
All right, so do we have anything else left tonight we need to talk about?
Just that, that plan, I think.
So we've got a, we've got a Form A plan that was filed after our agenda was closed, but we'll take a look at it and see what the... Is there someone here who, who can quickly explain to us...
Yep.
...the difference between this plan and the previous?
Sure. My name's Ed Jacobs, PMP Associates. Uh, so I was asked to prepare a new Form A for that Central Street parcel. As you remember, there was 16 lots on the original and remaining land of in the back. So what we did is, I was requested to, uh, re-divide lots four through 11. So you'll see there, that's kind of right in the middle of the street, they've changed those to 4A to 11A. And we've added a lot 17, which should be just to the left of your pen.
Where'd 11A go?
11A's the big one in the back.
Ah, okay, I got it.
Yep. So there was, there was additional frontage created when we, uh, re-divided them, so now there's a lot 17. Uh, lots one through three, one, two, and three stayed the same, and lots 12 through 16 stayed the same. So they're, they're kind of screened in the background, and they have a reference to the original plan. So that plan only shows the difference, which would be lots 4A through 11A and remaining land of. Basically, we changed the, uh, the way the roadways come in. So Adams Street is more, is actually radial to the curve now.
Okay, so, so just so I understand this correctly, now that I look at this, I see that it, it looks like all of the, all the lots that have the bold lines and bold text in them are the, the changes.
Correct, and they all have an A, an A associated with them.
Okay.
Everything else that's screened or a little bit lighter line type is, um, the same as the original plan, and that's why there is a reference on those lots to that plan.
Okay, so that's the reference to Plan Book 64, page 1135, that's actually already been recorded?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. I just figured it was better than, instead of doing those lots, duplicate those lots on another plan, it would be, uh, less confusing if we just had a new plan showing just the new lots.
Okay. So the, the future roadways that have been moved slightly?
Yes. Yep.
And then, uh, a bunch of the lots that had slightly over 100, 100 feet of frontage now have exactly 100 feet of frontage, and... And there's an additional lot, if I read this correctly.
Correct, yes. On the prior plan, lots five and six were oversized.
Yes.
I think at the time, maybe they were thinking duplexes or whatever, but now they're just going straight, you know, um, they just meet the zoning, and that way they got an extra lot out of it. I don't know if they just... extra lot out of it. I don't know if they just rethought it or whatever, but...
Yeah, so given the frontage and dimensions of most of those, it looks like that all of the ones from Columbus Ave. North are single-family, 100-foot frontage, just under, just over the required square footage.
Twenty thousand, yep. Yep.
Yeah, so I don't see any frontage.
Do you have a copy of your plan in that paperwork?
Yeah.
Have the drainage easement areas become unnecessary for...
Yeah, well, we have them in the back originally because they had already kind of done a preliminary design of what they wanted to do in the back. But now that we've changed the lot lines and everything, so we didn't want to be, you know, tied down to where that easement was going to go. So now we have to redesign, you know, the back as well, so that might change. So no deeds were written to it or anything, so...
Right.
Well, this plan will basically extinguish that easement as well.
So the deeds for 4A down through 11A will be drawn off this plan, and the deeds for 1, 2, 3, and 12 through 15 will be drawn off the previous plan.
Exactly.
Right?
Yes.
I believe this is acceptable to sign as a Form A. The only caveat I'll give you, I think, is the same caveat that we mentioned previously, and that is that the whole issue of the roadways and who has legal access and doesn't have legal access to all of the roadways within the prior plan is still an open issue.
Which, this plan doesn't correct, but it makes it a little bit more easy to understand on Columbia, Columbus Road.
Yeah.
Now, our new roadway, what we've left for a roadway layout stays in the actual original Columbus. So that does leave more easily accessible to get to the backland of those people.
Right. But again, just for general understanding, we do have a current site in town that was part of this overall development initially.
Correct. Yep.
Enhanced land, company land.
Yep.
In which a bank declined to issue a mortgage on that property because their title examiner said his read of the documents in hand says that every single owner within that entire parcel has a right to every one of the roadways.
Right. Yep, we are aware of that. Yep.
Okay. The assumption is that the landlord is involved, working on getting a resolution to that.
That is my understanding. Yep.
The town has already indicated, I think, in an affirmative answer that we're more than willing to try and get that taken care of. Our read of that thinks under McLand used on Massachusetts, to read that ancient deed that way is legally incorrect.
I agree.
Until such time as...
Yep.
That doesn't help someone trying to get a mortgage when the bank says no.
Right.
Okay. All right. So I think we can entertain a motion at this point to authorize the chairman to endorse the plan of land for ADGA Realty LLC dated March 8, 2021 to Form A lots, create new lots 4A through 11A and Lot 17 off of Central Street. We got a motion to that effect? So that's a motion, Lawler, second. Second, O'Leary. Any further discussion on the motion? Or listen further to the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All right. So we'll show that as a unanimous vote of all five, four, one, two, three, four, five regular members present and voting, and that Sheila Savoy-Glyden and Kevin Riley abstained from that vote since this is a vote under subdivision control? All right, thank you all.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank the board for taking this up on such short notice. I really, really appreciate that.
It was a fairly easy one, so...
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, anybody on the board here have anything else to... Just as an update for the board's information, we have interviews scheduled for a town planner. We boiled down the list of some high 20s or low 30s resumes that we've received for town planner, application for town planner down to seven, with five primaries and two backup. Those interviews are going to be by the town planner. Review committee will be held Wednesday. They're going to be held all virtually. I believe they're all going to be held Wednesday, so it'll be a busy Wednesday. We've also received 12 packages for an engineering review company for the town. That includes all of the town boards, as well as the DPW they'd be doing the work for. Those packages are currently being analyzed by the Town Engineering Review Committee. That'd basically be a contract with a, let's say, a fairly large reviewing firm. So it wouldn't be a single engineer. It would be a reviewing firm with a staff of engineers available that could be shared between the DPW, the planning board, Conservation Commission, potentially the assessors office, and potentially the Board of Health as well. So those interviews, or the selection meeting, I think is going to be the 25th of March, the last I heard. So if things work correctly, sometime in April or May, we'll have a town planner and an official town engineering firm on board. I'll keep everybody updated as I hear information, and as we decide where we're going to go forward with that. Anybody have any questions on that? Anything else we need to do tonight, though?
I think just the main thing is that our planning board meeting in April will be, as far as we know right now, it's going to be at the high school.
Yes, it looks like we're going to hold a planning board meeting in April at the high school.
At the, in the auditorium. We have...
Right, in the high school auditorium, we are going to have several zoning articles. One of those zoning articles is to currently revise our zoning bylaw and amend it in such a way that we would allow indoor manufacturing of marijuana in the town. That's been proposed and forwarded to us by the selectmen for action at town meeting. Before we can, as we all know, before we can take action at a town meeting on a zoning change, we have to have a public hearing on that change. Several other, much smaller potential zoning changes we're looking at, which we probably also have hearings on that night, which I expect would go very quickly. But one of those is to modify the language associated with outdoor dining. That language will remove the need to have a special permit to do the outdoor dining. It would simply be a site plan approval and a guidance from the building inspector on a building permit, as well as the sign-off on the building permit work that the building inspector says is in full compliance with all of the various codes within the town of Mass., city, state of Massachusetts and the town of East Bridgewater. Part of that's because several restaurants have outdoor dining set up, some of which spent, Fiesta being one, spent a significant amount of money to build that. That was done under the emergency COVID orders, which allowed restaurants to do that. It was pointed out to us that as soon as the state of emergency and the Commonwealth has ended, technically speaking, that debt can no longer be used for outdoor dining. So we've got a change that we're proposing that would effectively allow that to be continued based on a sign-off from the building inspector that it does meet all of our requirements under state law and local laws. Now, technically, it does not increase the seating of the restaurant, but it does allow them to use outdoor dining if some of the diners want to sit outside. If they want to increase the seats in the restaurant, that's a different process they have to go through with both the selectmen and the Board of Health. Because the selectmen issue all the alcoholic license, common vicu... all of the licenses associated with eating at the restaurant, and their sizing and all of that are done by the selectmen, and the Board of Health is in charge of, the Board of Health is in charge of the, the wastewater systems in the restaurant. Those also have a seating capacity associated with them.
Yep.
Technology's a wonderful thing when your battery runs low, but... So those will all be, hopefully, those will all be handled at that, at that town meeting for... Give me a minute here. I can unshleep my computer, so the people are just watching me.
We're supposed to be a wireless society, and all of a sudden, we have cords all day long.
Yeah, right.
House, the office, car, whatever the case may be, I've always got a cord wrapped around my ankle and my arm or something.
We'll see how smart this is, and whether we just go right back to where we were or not. Anyway, so I think that's all we have for at this point.
Well, we got 798 North Bedford Street submitted their new plans. We have, I think, a subdivision plan that came in. So it just depends on how...
Who's 798 North Bedford Street?
That's Speedway. Mike Peyton.
Oh, Peyton, okay.
North Bedford, yeah. Yeah. Is there a special permit?
Well, it's not going to work even when it is plugged in, so. All right. So I guess that's all we have then. Let's, I guess we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. You beat me, well then I'll motion it. I'll move it. I'll move.
So that's motion, O'Leary, second?
Yeah.
All right, I'll second it then. All those are favoring the motion to adjourn? Aye. All those opposed. We'll call ourselves adjourned at 7:45 PM. Thank you all.
Thank you.